Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item two, roll call.
Nelson. Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Donovan's here twice. Only, only one vote.
Ready to roll.
Consent agenda is as follows. Item 3A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of June 15, 2020. B licenses, approve a Class C native wine license for Century Farms Distillery and outdoor service area extension for 513 for a special event on August 22, 2020, all subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending June 30, 2020. D is a motion to approve the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-250 with a lift gate from Don Pearson Ford of Spencer, Iowa for $34,676 for the Park and Rec Department. This is a CIP item. E is a resolution for the 2020 sign replacement program for up to $5,000 with the Iowa Department of Transportation.
I'll make the motion.
First by Donovan.
No second.
Second by Tracy. Discussion or questions on these items? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four, old business. 4A is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 14 of the Spencer City Code for Planned Unit Residential Development, Section 9-14-3B2 concerning common open area and Section 9-14-4 concerning the layout and design requirements and Section 9-14-7 concerning minimum site size. This is the final filing.
I'll introduce him.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Discussion or questions on this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 4B is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 13, Section 1 of the Spencer City Code subdivision definitions. This is the final filing.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by George. Questions or discussions on this?
Well, this doesn't probably pertain to... Better put my speaker on.
Shouldn't I have turned on that?
Yeah, it was there, but... It's pertaining to the development on the south side of, of the old trailer park. They, they've put in the road. Is that in city limits or not?
It is.
It is? Okay, okay.
Oh.
That, that's what I would... Not where the new, that other new road is and stuff.
That's a new project under that property owner's name and that's, uh, that's a new project.
That's a county project, all right.
I apologize. I thought you were talking about the trailer park.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the staff and everyone involved. This is a culmination of about a year-long process of cleaning up some planning development-type things and so appreciate everybody's efforts in that. Item five, new business. 5A is a motion to approve a contract for the sanitary landfill services for fiscal year 2021 through 2023 with Pocahontas County.
That proves the con... Moves to prove the contract.
First by George.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Questions or discussions regarding this?
One question. I see it was a 2% increase per year on, on that. What, what was our rate? Was that 3% was in ours on our, the cities, within the city? We went to a 3%.
The 3%, sorry, my mic cut on. The 3% is for solid waste rates and the 2% is for landfill rates.
Okay, so we were going on that. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 5B is a motion to approve renewal of electric waste service agreement with the retrofit companies.
I'll introduce that motion.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Questions or discussion? It's a great service that we have, the ability to take electronic waste out to the transfer station. So, thank you for everybody involved in that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 5C is a motion for approval of purchase of four rooftop air conditioner units and the ductwork for the second floor of City Hall for $28,200 from Hanson's Plumbing and Heating.
I'll introduce him.
First by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by George. Discussion on this?
One question.
Yep.
Did they figure out why the other ones went out or was it, was there a problem that was solved, or?
I don't think we've come to any resolution other than, than it was an electrical event.
Okay.
Did we check with insurance then or did we have any, or we couldn't verify that if there was anything?
We haven't been able to verify anything.
We haven't been able to verify which doesn't allow for filing of anything.
Okay. So if it's an electrical event, how we prevent the new ones from getting damaged?
We don't have the building under construction. You know, I think, I think that was part of it. They were in working order when we took the, the building over. We don't know what happened to them, whether it was, you know, lightning. I think we'd be able to figure it out if it, if it were lightning, but something happened while the building was under construction. So, I don't anticipate the same problem with, with the new ones.
With the contractor that did the work, would they have insurance that would, would possibly cover this?
That, that I'm not sure of. And Mark may be able to get, give some additional information on just the condition of the units. My understanding is you really can't tell what happened to them, other than there was some type of event that caused them all to go out at the same time.
But we did do pre-inspection. They were functional units, part of us taking over the building.
They were not part of the scope of the project, so they weren't inspected in the same manner as other pieces of the building were, but Northwest Bank did share with us that they were in working condition and they were working when we took it, when we took it over.
Yeah, I believe when we as account... Christians verified that they were working when we took the contract and stuff, so, yeah, that's, that's what concerns me.
So there wasn't audit, Ron?
Well, yeah, we, we talked to them and verified that they were in good working order and they said they were.
I just find it, you know, I just find it odd. I've been associated with this building for 30 years and we never had all four air conditioners go out at once. Not once. We'd have one go on a fritz, but not four of them. So I, I don't know how you prove anything, you know, when you don't have control of the building and it's in the hands of the construction. You don't know whether it's an act of God or, other than we're writing a check.
Well, the majority of the work was done, you know, during the season when we wouldn't have been using air conditioning, so.
Any other questions or discussion related to this item? I'm gonna move this to a roll call vote. So vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5D is a resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Fourth Avenue Southwest Trail Project. TAP-U, TAP-U-7170, 628-8I, I believe, dash 21 to How Reconstruction Incorporated for $288,618.90. The bids were taken by the Iowa Department of Transportation.
I'll introduce it.
First by Donovan.
No second.
Second by Tracy. Questions, discussions? Little explanation maybe where the project's at for the voters. Ross?
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder, this project is on Fourth Avenue Southwest, 13th Street Southwest, 25th Street Southwest. It'll be located on the west side of the road between the edge of pavement and very much inch.
And I would say, review of the bids. There were seven bids for this project, which is quite a few. Kind of a, kind of a big, I would say, a big range of pricing, but the low bid was 85% of the engineer's estimate, which was $340,000. The average bid was 95% of the estimate and the high bid was $114,000. How Reconstruction's done several projects in Spencer. Their latest one they did was the trail going north out of town, the Great Lakes Division 2, and they do good work. So, we would recommend award to them in that amount.
Just to clarify, Ross, you said the high bid was 114%?
Percent of the estimate, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion related to this?
Mark, I had a, somebody come approach me on, on that Fourth Avenue Southwest area where the trails go in. We've put up signs, the speed signs in, like out at the fairgrounds in front of there. They were kind of concerned because they feel that it's kind of a speeding and was wondering if it was possible that we would put up... Because is that part of a safe route to school program there or not?
The sidewalk from 11th Street Southwest or the highway to 13th Street, that was a safe routes to school program or project. And on the north side of 13th Street, it was as well. The trail that ties in is not a safe routes to school project, but it really ties well into the system and kind of completes the sidewalk system in that area. The concern you're, you're stating is the speed of the vehicles on Fourth Avenue. Is that the main one?
Yeah. There, there's quite a few walkers down there.
We've, we've set out our traffic count, counter in the past and, and have done some work on that. That'll be a, a project we'll need to work with Chief Warburton on.
And that's what I'm just saying, maybe if you want to take a look at that and see.
I think that's a good comment and I think it does lend itself to have some speed kind of be picked up in that area. And maybe the signs that we've used with the speed indicator signs that are permanent may be a good fit for that.
Yeah, they seem to be working in those areas. It makes you think.
They do work well and then they, they get your attention as you, we kind of maybe don't pay attention at times, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's a good comment for that.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mark. Any other questions related to this item? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5E is a motion to approve professional service agreement with Carlson Detman Consulting for the Human Resource Services for $35,000 plus travel expenses. The Personnel Committee and the Committee of the Whole have discussed this item and recommended to the council for a vote.
Remove approval of the contract?
First by George.
I'll second.
Second by Lauren. Questions or discussions related to this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion passes. Item 5F is a resolution for preliminary, preliminarily approving the compensation plan recommended by Carlson Detman Consulting by the Personnel Committee.
I'll make that record, thank you.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by Lauren. Questions or discussions related to this item?
Mayor, just for clarification, what we're doing here is having you approve the framework of, of the compensation plan and the appeal process that goes along with that. We'll work through the appeal process and then present for final adoption the compensation plan.
So our action here tonight triggers that process to occur, so it allows the staff to begin that.
Amanda, when would this, this system go? Is it next contract?
It would be July 1 of 2021.
Right, so we have time to...
Yep.
To go through this and, and go through the process and make sure we're...
Correct.
All on board, okay?
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5G is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of bids from contractors for properties number six, number seven, number eight, and number nine as part of the Spencer Substandard Housing Rehabilitation Program.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
I'll second.
Second by Bill. Questions or discussion related to this?
Can we have someone state where they're at for us exactly?
Um... I can get you the information. I don't have it in front of me, where the properties are at.
I was happy to see that we're still going forward. It looks like some deserving homes and, and stuff that, that'll help some homeowners there and stuff, so I see one contractor got all the bids. Does it seem like we're, we're not having a whole lot of competition on the contractors or are this contractor's just aggressive on this program?
Well, there's two contractors here, which was the same as the last round.
Yeah.
It was split between two contractors.
Between the two contractors, yeah.
They... Go ahead, Bill. Amanda, is there some confidentiality as a part of this for not?
Well, that's part of why we've run it through Northwest Iowa Planning.
Right, so there's no property, property addresses and that sort of thing, which I, I would think we should respect.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Ten years, Ron. I was at the bid opening. They had three contractors for all four of the properties tour them, but then when it came down to it, they just didn't submit. So I don't know what the reasoning was, but they had an open house at each of the four locations and those that showed up could bid on it. It's just the one or two of them didn't bid on any of the ones, so. So I mean, there's contractors out there looking, whether they fit their needs or whatever. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion related to this item? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5H is a resolution accepting work on the 2020 PCC patching project.
I'll introduce him.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Questions or discussion on this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5I is a motion to approve change order number one for the 2019 Fourth Avenue Southwest Sidewalk Project to extend the completion date to July 1, 2020 and to complete seeding after August 10, 2020.
I'll make a motion on that.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Questions on this?
Do you intend to replace the sign for the golf course?
No.
No, no, no question. I mean, thank you.
They may refurbish the sign and use it somewhere out on the course, but right now it's just in storage.
Thank you.
Are they looking at the seeding later just because of the dry weather or what, what are we thinking the, on August 10th or something? Are we?
So the fall seeding date's actually open again on August 10th.
Oh, okay.
So the spring seeding date's end on May 30th, I believe, and then open again for the fall. They are gonna temporarily seed just for some erosion control on the slopes.
And they, and they did put some erosion control in the ditch so that it doesn't wash? I, it's down there.
Yep, they do have wattles along the whole distance of the trail.
I thought they, they did, but grass is so tall, it's kind of hard to tell.
Yeah, yep. It's kind of blending in right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you get a first and second on that one? Yeah?
Yeah, it was first by, I believe...
It was Ron and Tracy. Okay.
Ron, second by Tracy. Is that right?
Great, thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Ross. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 5J is a motion to approve change order number two for the 2019 West Fourth Street Sewer Replacement Project for an increase of $6,996.10 for water main work and restoration work. First by George.
Second.
Second by Bill, I believe, by a nose. Questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 5K is a motion to approve an engineering agreement with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson for the 2020 Fourth Street Southeast Sidewalk Project.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan. Second by Lauren. Questions or discussion about this?
Yeah, what question? Is this replacing what's already there on the southeast or is this a, a new section there?
These, these will be new sections of sidewalk. The project area is, it'll be on the north side of Fourth Street Southeast from Second Avenue to Fourth Avenue through East Leach Park. And then there's some infill on the north end of Fourth Avenue, kind of right at Fourth Street. And then there's some infill on the south end of Fourth Avenue down at Eighth Street.
Okay, so, so, 'cause it used to tie in, went back behind the, the building. Now this is gonna go on the, in the front of it?
This is, yeah, this is gonna go in the front. It'll kind of be up close to the bandshell, closer to the curb up there.
Yeah, 'cause before it kind of wound through the par, or the playground park and got back onto the trail that way, but this is gonna be infill and go down to the...
Yep.
Maintenance shed and, and tie in there or?
Yep, pretty close there.
Okay.
So just on the west side of the maintenance shed on the gravel parking lot there.
Appreciate it.
And it will tie into the trail there at Second Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Ross. Any other questions related to this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 5L is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plan and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for 2020 Fourth Street Southeast Sidewalk Project and the taking of bids therefore, with a bid letting on July 31, 2020, with a hearing date of August 3, 2020. First by Lauren.
I'll second.
Second by George. Questions or discussions on this?
Work can be done this year.
Uh, Mark and I did talk today about having a completion date of June 1, 2021, just to give a little bigger window for construction.
Thanks, Ross. Any other discussion? Vote by machine, please.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5M is a motion to approve certificate of substantial completion for the exterior portion of the 2019 City Hall renovation project.
I'll make a motion on that.
First by Ron. Second by Bill. Questions or discussions related to this item?
Amanda, where are we? We're substantially complete on the exterior. Interior, we're, we're substantially complete?
Yeah, interior was...
Was earlier, right, but?
I think it was in December.
There is nothing else out there right now. This is, this should complete that project.
Right, there are a few punchless items. I've been out the last week, so I'm not sure if they got completed last week or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 5N is a motion to approve renewal of managed services agreement with solutions for city and police networks.
I'll introduce that.
I'll second.
First by Bill, second by Donovan. Questions or discussion related to this item?
I see the police chief here is in here, so we can't grill him. And I, and I, yeah, so, but it sounds like a visamodus increase on this and, like normal.
Do you want to grill Officer Van Ull?
No, I think...
Nope.
I think he's probably just...
Okay, you get a pass tonight, Kyle. All right, hearing no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 6 is department head reports. We will begin with 6A, the planning department.
Just a brief update. The Board of Adjustment met this morning and discussed several items. They amended an earlier action for the moving of a property to reflect the addition of a double garage versus a full basement. They also approved a couple of variance requests. Planning and zoning will meet on Wednesday. There's a rezone request on the agenda for that. The action that you all took earlier with Carlson Detman will kick off our search for a planning director, so I have a call scheduled with Charlie this week to discuss that process and get moving on that. I imagine the first piece will be the job description, so we'll have a personnel meeting here in the near future to take a look at that and make sure that it's what we want it to be. When we originally discussed with him that process, he believed that we could get, get the, get the process rolling and at least an offer made and accepted by Labor Day. So hopefully we can stick with that timeline and have somebody onboard sometime in September.
Amanda, are you recommending any changes? Any significant changes to the job description?
Um, I think we need to have a discussion about the, the requirements on the inspection side. And I, I think it's, I think it's really important to have two people in the office who are certified to do residential inspections. I'm not quite sure that it's necessary to have two people certified to do commercial, but that is also something that we can use Charlie's expertise to help us determine if that's the right, right approach or not. That would be my only, and maybe just clarifying the language on what the role actually is.
Thank you.
That's all I have for planning.
Thank you. Any questions for Amanda? B, library. Mandy?
Hello. We are still open to the public via appointment and only to the front desk and back, so that enables people to do printing and faxing and notary services that they might need at this point. We had 749 curbside deliveries in May. We have 783 curbside deliveries in June. So that is a pretty consistent pickup. We kicked off our summer reading program and it is all completely online. Sarah Beth does two Zoom storytimes on Tuesday at 10 and Thursday at 3:00. And then I do want to mention July 16th, from 10:30 to 7, or 11:30 to 7:30 PM, outside the library, there will be a book giveaway for kids and teens. So normally their first prize in summer reading would be a book when they turn in their slips, but we've decided to, you know, make it a giveaway so that way we can control it. The kids can pick out their books. You know, we can help with the social distancing portion of it, 'cause it'll be in a controlled... Sarah Beth and Kayla will be there to kind of control that crowd there. We give out 50... We give out 50 craft kits for kids a week. This week is every parent's favorite slime, so, but you can color, I know, every kid loves the slime, every parent hates the slime. It's the bane of our existence in our household, so I totally get it, but sorry, parents, but the kids love it. And that's both the kids and the YA, the YA, we give out 25 kits per week. We've got 87 kids signed up, 18 infant and toddlers, 30 teens and 48 adults, you can sign up online. So get busy adults, you got to catch up to the kids. And then we have adult kits that are available every two weeks and we're doing 25 of those. So this week is an embroidered heart sampler, so if you've ever wanted to learn how to cross stitch, here is a free kit to learn how to do that, so, you know, I'm looking at all you guys.
Just for the record, Mandy, I have a cross stitch in my truck that I did with my mom when I was seven, so.
See, I'm telling you, and, and that's a lasting memory, so, you know, don't be afraid to, you know, if you teach, if you teach a, a boy to cross stitch, he can sew up his own clothes.
Mayor, I know, we won't forget about it.
It's a herky hawk, I'll send you a picture.
But, you know, even though, and, and we've discovered that it is much more difficult to run a summer reading program online than it is in person. You know, we were always exhausted by the end of summer reading program on most years. It's halfway through and we're exhausted, so, you know, making that many craft kits per week is, and then coming up with ways to connect with our patrons. So we are available for curbside delivery, it's okay if you don't know the title, we just need the title or the author. Please don't ask for the red book because you never know what you're going to get. Sometimes we get it right, though, I've had people ask for the red book and I say, "The Underground Railroad" by Colson Whitehead, and then they think I'm magic. But it, it doesn't, it doesn't usually happen that way, but we're also, if you run out of things to read, we're also available, by asking a few short questions, we can give you some new authors. So if you're sick of what you're reading, we can help out with that, so just give us a call. And I do want to mention that we also, the DVDs and video games and even the paintings are available for checkout through curbside delivery, so. Anybody have any questions for me?
Mandy, I had somebody reach out, wanted to do microfilm research, can they do that?
They cannot, because that is going into the library proper and using computers and we can't, if, if we let them use the microfilm computer, we'll have to let everybody use computers and we just, we can't do it yet, we're not in that phase.
Do you know when, when a decision would be made on that?
Well, we need the cases, to open to the public for people to come in, we need the cases in Clay County to go down. Because otherwise we're just going to be a hotspot. We can do microfilm research for a person, if they're looking for an obituary or something, they can contact us and we can do that.
Then you give them like a printed version of what they were looking for?
Yep, we certainly can, and we can even mail it, we do that all the time for people from out of state, so.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mandy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department Chief Conian, I believe I heard you on the phone. Oh, hang on John, hang on, hang on.
In the month of June, we had 15 fires, including a major garage fire just a week ago. That fire was a two-story, fully involved, you know, a garage, over 18 men and 30 gallons, 30,000 gallons of water, five hours of effort, along with PD, along with, with the hospital, you know, we got it put out, good effort by all involved. We also answered a couple of gas recalls, a couple of dumpster fires, a couple of odor investigations, we also had a kitchen fire, somebody on your council understands that, was very generous to offer meals to all the firefighters that evening, that was very good. We're still having a continued spike with illegal use of burn pits. We have gone out and done a couple of PSAs, we have talked to a couple of different people, but we still need to, you know, stay on top of that. 27 runs for emergency services, including panic attacks, difficulty breathing, somebody that was ran over, seizures, as well as unfortunately a few heart attacks. We had seven ambulance calls with the ambulance stationed in our station, including falls, a couple of strokes, back pain, as well as a broken ankle. Pretty busy month of June for three mutual aid calls, with Fosteria, we did a rollover, Royal, we did a rollover, and then Dickens Fire, we answered to help them with the garage fire. Always a pleasure to serve all our communities, I can say that. Special duty, we had four special items, we went ahead and we did the standby for, we did the standby for the freedom to march. We also had a couple of races and we stood by for the high school graduation, you know, spreading our flag out very proudly. Lastly, we are continuing to do some training, but we're doing training with COVID in mind, we have separated ourselves into smaller platoons, lending itself to not only better saturation, but more, more concentration and better hands-on time for each firefighter, as well as for the instruction and the topics given. And that's a little bit more of what's been going on in June. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it, chief, good job.
Hey, thank you, as far as cross stitching, I was practicing, I, I cut most of my hair off, so I'm starting a new hair blanket. All right, thank you.
And, and now, chief, no one can focus after that. All right, chief, interim chief Van Otterloo, follow that up. I don't think you're weaving a hair blanket.
He has no game.
Sorry, I got nothing, I had literally got nothing here, so, good evening to everybody here, yeah, you're right, after following that call there, I'm just going to give you the nuts and bolts of what we got. Month of June, we had 930 calls for service, 17 of those were arrests. We're currently in our SNAP program, which is the Safety Traffic Enforcement Program, that will come to an end tomorrow, so I guess technically that's July, but you know what, it's July 6th right now, so, falls under this here, so we'll finish up with that. The enforcement really strives on seat belts, but it's really any moving violation that we come across, and it's not just the Spencer PD that does it, it's, it's statewide. We're fully staffed, and I don't know if Chief Warburton has brought that up, coming from my end, who has been short-staffed for several months, if not close to a year, it's been wonderful to finally get my staff up and running and have a full staff underneath me, and it, it's nice to see, you see the attitudes change a little bit. Case load can get spread around a little bit more, it has been very delightful. This time of year, and again, I know it's July, but we just came off the 4th of July week here, fireworks calls, we had 44 of them in the last week. So I thought, and I asked Tammy if we could get the last couple of years, I probably should have done maybe a few more years, but in the last couple of years, last year we only had 31, and the year before that, 2018, we had 54. If you do the math on those two years, the average is right around 44, so we are probably close to average for that. And then the thing I have to get a shout out here for is, we got our fun run coming up here August 1st, we are doing something different. This is year number seven or eight for us to do this fun run that we put on to raise money to get our fifth grade DARE students off to Arnold's Park. And that's always been the biggest thing, this year, our SRO Darren Hanson brought in a company out of Michigan to teach the middle school kids on the safety aspect of vaping. We were able to get that completed, which was awesome, if I remember correctly, that was back in January. He also had something lined up with the same company to come in and to do a distracted driving with the high school students. Because of COVID, we weren't able to accomplish that, we already got that into play to come this fall or this winter, depending on how the school year goes. So those are the two biggest projects that we try to raise money for, for this fun run. As of this morning at 6 o'clock, we had 35 registered already, to put on an average by the cutoff date for the first registration, we usually have about 70. So we're halfway there after one week. I received probably about 10 more emails today, so it's always kind of a, let's open this gift bag to see what it is, is it a, a gift bag of one runner? Or is it a gift bag of five runners, so I'll figure that out tomorrow, so we are on course to getting to those numbers. I'd like to see 100, even though we're not doing an actual run this year, we're doing a virtual run on August 1st, but I'd like to see at least 100 participants, when we, on average, when we host it and have people come there, we have about 150, between 130 and 150. So if we can get to 100, that would be awesome. There you have it, and I have no hair, and so I'm not making a quilt out of it. Any questions? Thanks for making this easy.
Thank you.
Public Works, Mark?
Good evening again, the street division is always busy this time of year with construction projects. One of the biggest ones, we always like to try to get out of the way, is the preparation for the seal coat, that's with the asphalt repairs, sometimes a little difficult getting asphalt, and they're getting close to having that completed. You've noticed that we continue to send out information on the mosquito spraying, that's obviously seasonal. We've changed the format a little bit, trying to use social media and trying to get, get the word out, and that seems to be working well, appreciate the people that share the post. We also, concrete patching, and then tomorrow we're starting a taxiway repair at the airport on taxiway C that has some bad panels, so, going through the process to have a NOTAM and had to change our type of barricades to meet FAA standards, so that's under control and ready to go. Solid waste operations are normal, we have seen a change, when, when we're under the COVID restrictions, we require people to use the, the website to prepay and, for some of their operations, and it worked really well and smooth, but that's significantly dropped off, I'd like to remind people that's still available to them, and that can expedite, expedite your time at the, at the transfer station if you're prepaid ahead of time and you can zip through, so you can use that if you would choose, we'd like that. And then I did send out an email, as, as you folks recall, now we had a fire at the landfill today, that was in the cell. That happens in the landfill business at times, so we did have a fire safety program, as you remember from a few years ago, for, to prepare for these type of operations. It was fortunate that we had a large excavator on site with the cell contractor, was able to dig it out and help work, so fire department was on site from 7:30-ish to about 1 o'clock today. Still will need some further monitoring, but we believe the situation is under control. Anything else for the evening?
Do you want to talk about the airport meeting?
Oh, sure, the airport is, Thursday night, we have the Airport Master Plan Project Update PAC Meeting, it's a public input meeting here at City Hall, and is it start at 6:00, I'd have to double check on that, I missed that part on looking that up, so, I'll get that out. There's two phases to the master plan, the public input and then also the, the airport board meeting. This, this week or this meeting, which is approximately four of them, basically focuses on options, what are your different options for different projects? And please attend if it works for you. George?
I used your prepayment on solid waste, and the next day I get a bill by email that I owed that check to the city. So I called the City Hall to find out what was going on, and it gets credited late, I don't know what it was, but they, it does get credited on your account till later. And whether that's the next day or a couple more days, but I, it, it made it look like there was a mistake, you know, I'd prepaid and, and
Sure.
wasn't getting credit for it, but I did, but there's, there's just a little quirk there, and maybe Brian would be the one to ask about how that works, I don't know.
We've got a few things we're working through on that, and Brian's been trying to hone that in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, what's the arrangements with Black Hills Energy on every time they do a curb cut to do the new gas line? We, does the city get reimbursed to fix them out to repair that, replace the curb and the street?
The situation is that, that their contractor hires a concrete restoration company or, or a division that comes in and does the concrete repairs. What we do inspect, Public Works inspects every patch, but we also look at that as an opportunity. If they go in and they make a cut and the panel is already bad, does it make sense to make the panel a little larger at times and contribute to that patch? So we try to take them on an individual basis and to see if we can improve it at the time, so. The citizens don't pay for the, the original patch that was caught, the minimum to make the gas connection, but like I said, if we can make it better, we try to.
Thank you.
Yeah? Anything? Thank you.
Thanks Mark, Parks and Rec, Jared?
Good evening, so the Aquatic Center opened on July 1st, so it is open and operational. It's been fairly busy here as of late, since it's been so hot, but I think right around the averages, on the high end, is about 80 people in there at one time, and our capacity is 125, so we're doing a good job there, have the ability to spread people out, not having any issues there, do proper cleaning each hour. We have still been getting questions on season passes, so I just want to reiterate, we will carry those passes over till, to next year, if you purchase one this year, you can still use it this year and all of next year as well, so. And then the other question was, anybody that is 12 years and younger will be required to have an adult who is 18 years and older accompany them to the pool. So we've had a few questions and kind of confusion on some of that, so I just wanted to clarify that. Out at Pedersen Park, we had a well pump that runs our irrigation system to some of those fields go bad last week. We were able to get Milford's well service there to take it out and replace that pump, so that is in there and operational. The dog park project, as far as finishing up the parking lot, we're going to be doing that, finishing that up next week, later next week, alongside the street department's help, drilling some holes and that sort of thing. Trails, another thing we're going to work with the street department on is trying to fix some of the potential solutions on water, undercutting some of the trail on West Leech Park, trying to come to a solution to figure out how to work with the water down in that area, rather than try to fight it constantly in a maintenance nightmare down there, so, trying to come to a solution with that, continue to do that. We look forward to that Fourth Avenue Southwest Trail Project that you guys voted to award, Howery. The Park Tech position, it closes tomorrow, we've had 27 applications that we've received, so we will review those and then go from there and pick times to interview, probably late next week or the week after. And then finally, our, the Master Park Plan, they emailed me a, just kind of a rough draft of that, reviewed it, made some changes, they will put together a more presentable document and have that to us next week. We will have a chance to take a look at that, and then they will gather all our reviews, comments, that sort of thing, from the park board and the council. Then they'll have, put together the final presentation and the final document for the August 17th council meeting for adoption, so. Any other questions?
Any questions for Jared? Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Golf course, I don't know, Brian, are you on the phone? Yep.
Evening mayor, council, and city manager. One of the larger projects we're working right now is dealing with some tile issues. The tile work has been completed in the ground south of Stony Brook and the golf course property. We intercepted four existing tile lines, ran a new tile line through the waterway and across Fourth Avenue Southwest. There's obviously still some finished grading and whatnot left to do in that area. All of the trees were removed in this area, so that will help clean it up as well. And it's raining this morning, we normally have our sand trap on 14 completely full of water for days on end, and by this afternoon it was completely dry, so it is working nicely in that area, we'll continue on with the cleanup. Once the contractor's finished in that area, we're going to move up into Upper Waterway Park and continue on from where the repairs were made last year and start working our way down. down Waterway Park, across the road into the golf course waterway and get all of that area taken care of, um, as well. So that'll be a lengthy project. Um, as was stated earlier, we removed our old golf course sign at the intersection of Walmart and Fourth Avenue Southwest. Uh, it was kind of a safety concern with the Safe Ross School, and also the sign is, uh, quite a few years old, right around 20, and not quite in the best of shape. So that's been removed. I'm not really sure if it's worth, uh, installing anywhere else due to conditions of the sign, but, uh, we will, uh, table that for a golf board discussion. We have erected our new sign at the clubhouse, which, uh, coincides with all the new park signs around town. I'd like to thank Jared for helping us with ordering that. It looks real nice. Uh, the old sign, I believe, was about 26 years old, and it took us 15 seconds to get it out of the ground. Our daily maintenance has been, uh, very challenging. Um, with, with the COVID situation that everyone is dealing with this year, it's required us to have more staff in the clubhouse than normal, just to keep up with our sanitation practices. Um, so we've been running a little bit short outside to try to balance out, uh, the labor expense. I'd really like to thank the staff on the ground and the staff in the clubhouse. They've all been doing an amazing job. Um, they've really, uh, worked great through some of the challenges that we've been facing, and I'm extremely proud and thankful for each one of them for their commitment to the golf course. Um, they're doing awesome, and I can't thank them enough. Uh, probably the brightest spot for us at the golf course is the irrigation system, which I'm absolutely not used to having the irrigation system work so wonderfully. And, and it has been working very nice each night, uh, putting a lot of water out. Um, I think one thing that folks don't understand, and I try to, uh, share the information with them as much as I can, is that we operate our irrigation system on a Iowa DNR water permit. So that permit allows us to irrigate from April 1st, um, into October. And we are also limited to the amount of water that we can use during that period of time. And we're limited to the amount of water that we can pump out of our wells into our ponds during that time. So it's challenging. We just don't have an unlimited amount of water supply where we can just go, go, go. But, uh, the system's working awesome, and uh, in my opinion, I think the golf course is in beautiful shape. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? All right. Each?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Brian. City Attorney, Don?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, activity was, was up, just like I think it is in all departments. Uh, this time of year, things are happening. Um, land use issues, zoning issues, those sorts of things. Um, mostly routine sort of activities. Um, things I noticed that were unusual were assisting the staff and, uh, the elected officials, uh, in, um, dealing with the protest, which was only last month. It seems like maybe six months. That was certainly unusual and certainly turned out, I think, well for the city. Um, completed, uh, things I think Teresa has or soon will be submitting the final documentation to the DOT for the transfer of the railroad right of way, hopefully to be followed up with the check for the purchase price. Um, can't say that it's unusual, but there were a couple of personnel managers that I was asked to assist with, uh, during the month. Hopefully those are behind us. Um, one, I guess, final note I'd mention, ownership of dogs carries with it responsibility. Uh, some dog owners don't seem to understand that. Uh, but I'd certainly encourage people to try to train and control their animals, um, so that they don't annoy or injure their neighbors and others in the community.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Don? Appreciate all your work. Item 7, Engineers Report. Ross, you haven't been to the podium yet tonight.
Good evening again. Um, quick construction update. Over at the landfill, the contractor has finished installing the HDPE liner. They should, uh, finish pressure testing that tomorrow, hopefully. Uh, once that's complete, they'll install the Leach 8 collection pipe down the center of the new cell, and then they will place the 12-inch drainage layer on the whole bottom of the cell. Um, as we talked about a little earlier, the Fourth Avenue Southwest Sidewalk Project is pretty much complete, other than the seating. The contractors indicated they will be in sometime this week to do the temporary seating, and then again be in after August 10th to do the, uh, final seating of the project. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, on the West Forest Street Sewer Replacement Project, um, contractor replaced the valves in the West Forest Street Lift Station. Um, we had, uh, good teamwork between, uh, the Street Department, Duane at the wastewater treatment plant, and the contractor. Um, they ended up bypassing two lift stations to do that valve replacement because there's, there are two lift stations on that forest main. And so that, uh, teamwork created an uneventful valve replacement, which was good. And then lastly, uh, Cruz Kate Nelson has moved offices. Um, we are now located at 2303 West 18th Street, and that's the Y100 building across from the Country Club. So if you're looking for us, that's a good place to start. Well, he could. I don't think he does. Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Item 8, City Managers Report. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. A few, a few items. First, I'd like to remind the public that, um, while we do check our Facebook messages, um, the best way to reach us if you have a question or comment or issue is to call City Hall or to email, um, the appropriate staff person or to utilize the website to submit a comment. Um, we don't get to those messages, uh, as frequently as we do the other, uh, means of communication. Um, secondly, earlier this evening, you all, um, approved substantial completion on the exterior of the City Hall Project. Um, so I just want to offer a, a couple of thank yous. You know, this was a project that was well in the works, um, when I came on board as City Manager. Um, so I'd like to thank Brian Weave. He, he served as the project manager for this, um, as he was the interim City Manager when it began. Um, and it, it certainly was a challenging project at times, and we're glad to be in this, in this space. Again, I want to thank Midstates for their work on the building and their continued work. As with any new project or new, new space, um, there, there's minor things that need to be worked out, and they've been great at, um, coming back on site and helping us deal with that. And also to Cruz Kate Nelson for their work on the project. Um, we're glad to have you as partners. Um, Boards and Commissions, at the last meeting, you all made several appointments to the City Boards and Commissions. We are planning to do an onboarding session for all members, not just new members. At the Department Head meeting tomorrow, we'll set the date. I'm looking, excuse me, the last week of July, um, to schedule that. We'll do a, a general overview, um, financial policies, responsibility of Boards and Commissions, and then allow for some breakout time for the, um, individual, um, Boards and Commissions. So, uh, be looking for that date, um, but also materials to come. Um, our COVID Task Force continues to meet daily. Um, as, as you're all aware, the numbers, um, in Clay County continue to rise, while not as sharply as some of the other counties. Um, just be mindful that, that it is here and it is impacting our community. Um, so take the precautions that, um, that are necessary. Um, lastly, I'd like to, um, uh, comment on an incident that happened last week. Um, it's long been a goal of, of previous councils and, and the current council to, um, promote and support diversity in our community, not just in the individuals who live and work here, but in the programs that are offered and opportunities that are offered. Um, as most of you are aware, we had an incident with an employee last week where that commitment was not reflected. Um, and I'd like to reiterate to the community, um, that, that we as appointed officials, and, and I think I speak on behalf of the council, as elected officials strive, um, to make Spencer, um, as accommodating and welcoming, um, of a community as we can be to all individuals. So, um, if there are issues in the community that you think we need to be aware of, I encourage you to reach out, um, and we'll do our best to address them. With that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Hey, Amanda, I just want to follow up on the golf course.
Yep.
Where are we, where are we at on that now? I mean, you sent a letter out, saw that?
Oh, yep. So, um, we did send a, a report out to the Golf Course Board and Council, um, regarding some, uh, there was a, uh, an issue that was brought to my attention that we, um, investigated internally. Um, through that investigation, um, determined that there were just some irregularities in, um, application of city, city policies. So that was submitted to the Golf Board. I met with them this evening, um, along with Brian. Um, and, and I believe that we're all on the same page that, um, you know, there are some policies that, that, uh, need to be implemented immediately, including, um, counting down the drawer at shift change, ensuring that, um, every transaction has a receipt attached to it, um, things of that nature. Um, and the Golf Board was very receptive to those, um, to those issues. Long-term, um, and this will happen when we, when we get to budgets, you know, we need to discuss, um, full-time management in the clubhouse and what that might look like, um, from, from a financial perspective. And, you know, is it a full-time, uh, excuse me, is it a full-time year-round position, or is it just full-time during the season? Um, how do we ensure that, um, there's, there's leadership consistently in the clubhouse while there's leadership out on the course as well? Um, so overall, and, and Don, you know, reviewed that report and, and worked with us on it. Um, I think the golf course is in good shape. It just, sometimes we have to be reminded about, you know, what the practices need to be, um, and, and get that house in order. Yep.
Amanda?
Yes.
As I was, thank Lauren, uh, like, thank Lauren for bringing up the comment about the, the, uh, golf course. But, um, in reviewing the bills, a part of those bills is what we buy, pay for beer out of the, at the golf course. And my question is, can we get a, as council, can we get a report of what our margins are on those products that we sell out there? And I don't know whether they do an inventory at the end of each month, so they adjust it, so we know whether or not our cost of sales are in line with what they ought to be for the sale of beer, because that's our prime, uh, one of the prime revenue things out there. And whether we get a 20% markup or 100% markup, I don't think we know. And I think it's important that we do know.
Well, I think you're right, that we, we don't, um, you know, we don't have a good number on that. We could certainly work to get it, whether it's a monthly report. Now, I do know that one of the new practices, um, being implemented is that inventory, you know, during each, each day, when we go out on the course with the beer carts, X number of this, this product and this product are going out, this is what's coming back, and comparing that with, with the overall inventory. Um, we've only been doing this about three to four weeks. Um, so far it's going well, but I think that'll provide us with some better numbers from an inventory perspective.
Because we know what we're paying for the gross product to begin with. We gotta be able to compare that to sales to see whether or not we do have what is, I think ought to be a, a market margin that we're making on those products. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions for Amanda? Thank you. Item 9, Mayor's Report. I have three items. The first is, we still have a vacancy, uh, that was filled by Rich Prentice when he was on the council of the Communications Center Board, and I would, uh, entertain a motion to appoint Lauren to that board. Uh, they only meet a couple of times a year. I think last time was to put cameras and, and audio system. And, uh, George, you serve on that too, right? Yeah. So, um, I would entertain a motion to appoint Lauren to that board.
I move with point.
First by George.
And second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
Yes, if it's good enough for George to have him there, I guess it's good enough for the rest of us.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I didn't hear any opposed. Good job. Uh, the second is, uh, signs. I would just like to bring to the council's attention, I don't know if you've received, but I've received several calls regarding commercial signs in residential areas. Um, a lot of times, these are little signs, uh, associated usually with roofing companies or gutter companies or things of that nature. And so I reached out to Don and Robin to get clarification. What are the ordinances? What are the rules? Um, they're not allowed in the right-of-way nor on private property, um, business signs in the residential area. But there is a window of 72 hours. Is that correct, Don, on an active project? So I don't know if you want to maybe just touch on that a little bit. And then what I'd like to do is just get feedback from the council. So this is, it's a growing problem. It's becoming a systemic problem. These signs are popping up all over town. We have the ability to issue a municipal infraction of a value of our choosing if we so want. Traditionally, the Planning Department, Robin, the nuisance officer, has just handled it. People didn't know about it. Oh, I'm sorry. And then they quit. Um, we have, uh, at least one contractor in town that refuses to quit. They continue to just disseminate them wherever they like. And so I'd like Don to clarify what the ordinance states, and then I'd like feedback from the council about how you feel, you know, a repeat offender should be handled.
As the mayor has explained, the, the primary thrust of the ordinance is that these signs are not permitted. There is one exception for certain, um, signs that are permitted of, for 72 hours, and that's, uh, typically the garage sale sort of sign or graduation sign, those sorts of things. I felt that the fairest interpretation was to include, uh, these commercial signs. If, if you're having your house roofed and you want everybody to know who's doing it, you can put a sign out, uh, under this category. But again, just while it's underway, you're the 72 hours. So, uh, if the signs are just being put out at, at random, so to speak, and not removed, uh, that is a violation. And as the mayor has described, if we have somebody intentionally insisting on continuing to violate it, we'll, we'll respond.
Feedback from the council? Thoughts?
I personally don't have a problem if, you know, we got a roofing company, it's usually a two-day, three-day at the max. Stick a sign up, and when they're done, take the sign down.
Right.
But something that's there for a week, uh, that doesn't make sense.
Okay. Anyone else?
I echo that. Same thought, though. I mean, it can get carried away. And I think it's reasonable that if it's, you know, the 72 hours is reasonable, but if it extends be, much beyond, I think it needs to be definitely addressed.
What about when they put them out, like, at the, uh, on Grand Avenue in the, um, E Avenue in the center? Is that legal?
Never been legal.
I didn't think it was.
Nope.
So the police pick those up then?
Usually it's Robin, somebody from the Planning Department, the nuisance officer, or city staff if they see it. But it's usually the nuisance officer. And to be clear, when we're talking business signs in residential areas, we're not talking just right-of-way. We're talking both sides of the property. So the city property as well as the, the residential property, you can't have that sign either side unless, as we've stated, you know, it's during an active project. So, um, I just wanted to, to bring that up so we had discussion about it. And, um, you know, hopefully it rectifies itself.
I would think we'd have to have some kind of meeting to discuss what, what our options are there, because, you know, we, I don't know what, what anybody here's thinking, you know, what kind of civil infraction or, you know, and at least get it out there and, and give them their chances to get it off there and stuff. So, um, at least get it out in the newspaper and, and, and media out there, maybe at least, I think maybe educating is going to be.
I know, Robin, Robin does do a good job. So if the name and number are on the sign, and there's some of them in the closet, well, the entryway over here, she'll call the person, hey, you know, educate them about it. Um, there's no specified dollar amount to the fine. It's arbitrary with the magistrate, correct, Don? And so, you know, really, before we did more than what Robin does currently, I wanted to bring it up at the council meeting to get discussion, you know, if this stuff happens outside the scope of jobs, you know, um, are we still supportive of, we can't just have these signs popping up all over town, basically. So. And then, uh, number three, July is one month past halfway. So 2020 is actually over 50% of the way done. And I would just encourage everybody, uh, to look at, um, look at July as your January again. So we all have a lot of enthusiasm in January. There's all great things we want to accomplish. Uh, we set out, we meet, we have goals, and, uh, this has certainly been a challenging year with COVID and other things that have popped up on our radar and, and eaten some time. But I would really encourage the council, um, as well as But I would really encourage the council, as well as the community members, to look at the rest of 2020, figure out, are we on track to accomplish what we wanted to in 2020 before we know it? Although it's really humid and hot right now, the leaves are going to be turning colors in a handful of days, and we're going to wonder where summer went. And so I would just encourage everybody, you know, over the next week or two, take a breath, reflect a little bit about what we've accomplished, and then think about what we still need to accomplish and move forward under that mindset. So I do appreciate everybody's hard work that they put in, whether you're an elected official or staff or community member. 2020 has not been an easy year, but we still have things to accomplish, and we need to keep moving forward. So with that, I would entertain any questions. All right. Item 10, council committee reports.
We have our next regularly scheduled council meeting on July 20th at 6:30 PM. I would be on the lookout, sorry, I wasn't, hold on. I would be on the lookout for dates to discuss the planning director position. I don't have those yet, so just be, I'll let you know. Be checking your email.
Thanks, Amanda. Item 11, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims.
Go ahead.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item 12, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anybody like the podium or mic? Everybody's all talked out.
Amanda, can we schedule maybe sometime in August, if vacations are okay? Anybody's taking vacation this year, having a finance committee meeting to go over the financial policy?
Yep.
Kind of carve that up and...
I know Brian's been working on, sorry, Brian's been working on the content for that. He said it, you know, six to seven hours probably. No, really, like two. So we'll, we'll get a date scheduled for that as well.
I just, from the mayor's point, let's, if we keep putting it off, it never gets done, so.
Like it. Anybody else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
Check it.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.